Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. The time is now 6:00 PM. Regular meeting of the city council, the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Shout please may the city pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You have to leave for some reason down there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Following items are on file for consideration of city council. Roll call, please.
Benado?
Here.
Gennon?
Here.
Greeno?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Mateh?
Yeah.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Gennon?
Yes.
Greeno?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Item three, policy items and staff reports. Do we have anything from staff? Nothing? Okay. Item four, petitions or communications. All were written. Do we have anything from... Present? First person, Mr. Brad Kirby.
Hello there, Mr. Mayor Rico and rest of the council. What I have, and I want to pass this to you. Is a proposed first Friday art walk for Trinidad. Starting April 5th, do a first Friday art walk every month. Also, you'll see on here, I have a kind of just a kind of rough estimate of what it could look like. What I want to do also is get the people that are staying at the hotel rooms to come down to our art walk, not just the people in town. So on the back of it, you'll see there's six hotels. Mainly the hotels are forty people, forty guests and above. Give fifty copies of each one of these to the hotels, circle their hotels, tell them the clerks, whoever sent the most to our art walk that Friday night, because the people bring these tickets to them and say, hey, I came here to see art walk, and we'll collect them. The ones who the hotel brings the most tickets to us, we'll give the clerks fifty dollars cash.
Did any more of these? Did you bring any more of these?
Didn't bring any more.
Get us some more, please.
I will. So, but also just to bring the tourist out, this is very direct kind of target marketing here, where we go after just these people for our art walk. On the art walk, I've contacted most of these people with the gallery row, SERT, I still need to contact the minors. There's six, seven of them actually that are listed. And also the Fox DeGave, which I think since the city owns this, it'd be great just to open up the lobby, tell them what we're about to do, have a donation jar, maybe a pamphlet, what spots they are going to be, and all walk all the way down to gallery row, where they have gallery row. A month ago, I think it was, two months ago, when they had the red painting thing, the contest at the gallery row. And a lot of people in Melanie had her open, grand opening, ribbon day. And there was probably thirty, forty people went back and forth from Melanie's to my place to gallery row. And I think if we can do that every month, it'd be great, and get the hotel people coming out there for that too. So I'm going to go to the tourism board. I'd like to give a little money for the printing and for the cash for the people, instead of our pockets or mine. And so I'm going to go to tourism board, also Main Street too, see what they can do. So I just kind of want your support and your prayers on this, and that's about all I have.
I want... So you said April through when did you want to do this?
Really, I do my first Friday openings from April, every first Friday, all the way to December. And that's including November and December. At December, I do my shows for two months at a time. But mainly from, I'd say, April to October at least. I know June, July, August, September are a big vacation of months or tourist months, because we've got Trinidadio, we've got the arcade, and June and July are great decisions. So that's my proposal, and I will bring you...
Not to be confused with Art Trek, by the way, Ryan, I don't mean to interrupt, but this is not Art Trek.
No, I was, somebody came up with Art Trek, and I kept it art walk.
Gotcha.
Also, the merchants are not advertised on this, because if I did one, I have to go them all, there's too many that come and go. The merchants and I are a little, we're balking each other right now about that. But this is an art walk, and I told the merchants, if we get people down there for the art, they should be open and they may be selling stuff too. So, and I, on the bottom of that, said, please, visit our fine merchants, it's Don and Shaw in Trinidad, Colorado. So I did not totally leave them out here. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Rodney Wood.
Well, I would be the town jester, you have to wear the coat. I'm here not to ask for money, I'm here to say thank you. Quickly, 2012 is approached by Pat- Patrick, the president of the tourism board, to create an event, and a signature event, and the goal was to attract tourists. Well, that's been quite the ride since then, going into our seventh parade now. That was an amazing seed money, because through the first three years, it was a seed money to kind of get us going, and it's really been fantastic. A couple of quick stats is, one is that all of these happen in big cities, except for us. Houston, Seattle, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Tulsa, Chattanooga, it moves around in Florida, Reno. Some of them all been doing them a long time, this will be our seventh parade. Houston for thirty-three or thirty-four year. For the last two years, Seattle and San Francisco are both twenty-five years each. We've had more art cars in our parade than Seattle and San Francisco combined. So we're the second largest event in America, and that's nuts. People are just baffled, and so are we. So it's been a really fun thing, we get all kinds of fun publicity. Having former governor Hicken Looper invited to bring art cars to the state capital was kind of major guerrilla marketing coup. Some of the people that were just here today, that took a tour, that were part of that small business, that state group that was here, commented on seeing the cars at the state capital, so that's really cool. So I'm just here to say thanks for your support, I'm filling out these, filling out these grants right now. And they ask, how does the city support you, and what do they think, and it's just so easy. That's like the easiest question they get to answer. Everybody, the police chief, the streets and bridges people, put up with our madness. It's a great thing, and we just wanted to say thanks, and that's the main reason we're here today. And we had a little detour gallery, because we kind of took a detour there. Because we're a nonprofit, we count. Our volunteers click, our visitors. And we had our board meeting not too long ago. I couldn't believe it when I told them, that little gallery in eleven and a half months had twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-two people come through the door. If we're lying through our teeth, half of that's amazing. I mean, that's just nuts. Thousand people a month, potshots, neener, neener. I mean, it was, I couldn't believe it when, because it came, every day it would keep track. You're kidding. So, and that, so, shows people want something out of the ordinary. So speaking about the ordinary, here we go. I'd like to be able to pass this out. The Art Cartopia Museum is going to have its grand opening. Sound familiar? Well, it's called Retread, because here we go again. So that's going to be March 16th. Now, Mayor, as I understand, at some point you did a run ribbon cutting that involved tools and sparks and steel. So your practice, are you available?
I'll let you know, I might have something else.
March 16th, there's a bunch of victims. We go from two to, the opening itself is two to sixteen, depending whether it works for you or for someone else. Okay? So that's what this is, so I'd like to pass that one of these around, just talking about the Retread. So, I'll just take your advice now. And lastly, I've got to tiptoe here a little bit, because given your last meeting, this whole ethics thing, we'd like to give you all free tickets to the museum. But the museum's free, so, would you check and make sure these are appropriate? So, we really are having fun, we had that group today, we had twenty-seven people from economic people, they were just blowing away, had a great time. But in closing, thanks everybody in the city, thank you Trinidad for making us having one hell of a good time.
We want to thank you for that.
For sure.
For what you do, it's great.
We had eight thousand volunteer hours last year, before we had museum. So this is a group project, and a lot of helpers. And again, I know we're a little abnormal enough, especially when it comes to the circular parade, so, thank you.
I have one question for you. She'll tell us the story of that jacket.
Well, since I drive a van covered in eyeballs, I had the regular jacket, but that was details, so I needed something for more casual wear. So Susan and I made, as I accumulated patches as I went, and then once I started, then people started sending in too.
That's great.
You look like you were about to say something.
No, I was not.
Oh, it's lawyer. So thank you, people, appreciate you, we appreciate you all.
And you too, Tara. Okay, next is Ryan Dormand, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Ryan, come on up, please. Ryan, this is true, tonight, in my invitation, ordinarily, because I had a personal situation. I had TVs, cathode ray, cathode ray tube TVs, that need to be disposed of, and you just don't throw them in a trash. And in the past, the last time I did that, I used to take them to the sheltered workshop, who used to dismantle those things and take care of them, so I thought, no problem, I'll call them. Well, when I called them, they came, I didn't do it anymore. So I was kind of in a panic, I wasn't real sure what to do with them. So I called, I talked to, actually it was Audrey, and she referred me to Trinidad Tech Shop, which is a partner of Maple and, I guess it is?
Now.
Now, Maple and Now, and that's where I met Ryan. And that, I showed up, I said, look, I got these TVs, can you help me dispose of them? He told me briefly about what he did, that his storage capacity was nearly full, but bring the TVs, so here we are. In the course of that episode, he and I began talking about electronic waste. We talked about the landfill, and the limitations thereof. We talked about the recycling program. And then, it's an increasing problem, electronic waste. You drive, drive the county, you look in any arroyo, you'll find refrigerators, console TVs, the whole bit. So anyway, and pursuant to that conversation, I asked him if he could appear tonight to talk about kind of what he does and the need for the services that he provides. Is that a proper introduction, is that what happened?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, I'm Ryan, I've met most of you, and to those of you that I haven't, hello. I own a tech shop there next to Napa, and for a little over a year, we've had a free recycling program for all e-waste. And we handle, and it does e-waste. Then we hit capacity, because I've got one guy breaking it down. And so our storage filled up floor to ceiling, and a little over a thousand square feet. So, we, for the most part, stopped taking large items already, and within the foreseeable future, we'll have to stop taking all recycled e-waste. But, I didn't feel like I was ready to approach everyone, but I have been working on a proposal and a business plan for a recycling facility that would handle Trinidad's needs as far as e-waste and glass and building materials, things like that, that currently some people might have problems getting rid of. Another thing that we've been noticing, and we've been getting a lot more calls recently for these old TVs, specifically, the last one I remember was, somebody called, they said that he owns property near Fisher's Peak, not Fisher, sorry, the citizens' rest. And people were taking TVs and throwing them over the edge. And I found that similarly, I, my girlfriend and I own the Morley Church property, and even out there, people have been dumping TVs on my property. So like, any landmark around here, you look around, you're going to find broken electronics. And with us nearing capacity, I needed to come up with a solution that would fix everyone's issue. So what I'm here tonight for, a little preemptively, I think, but I'd like to know what you guys would like to see in my proposal. Any ideas, any specifics that I need to know before I come and present it to you.
Probably, we can't do anything tonight, but probably maybe in a work session going forward, and probably working with Mr. Sun, start that conversation, and then if we need to have a work session, that's probably what we'll have to do. That's why that's the starting point.
And I also suggested that because of the regional nature of this problem, that maybe a visit with county commissioners might not be a bad idea. Here's one of those situations where their, the county and the city needs meld together for the environment to develop.
That's actually a good point, because you know, we're setting up these meetings with counties, and we'll talk about that.
This would be a perfect time to go to internet discussion.
Sorry, lastly, before, we have two proposals. One's a smaller plan, and one's a much larger plan.
Yeah, there you go. Eco system.
Sorry, we're working on two proposals, one's a much smaller plan, one's a much larger plan. And Anthony had recommended that I just approach the larger plan, we scale down as we need to, but should we go both, or would you guys prefer to see one or the other?
I think that would probably determination, getting with...
We can move this up a little bit.
All right, thank you, Ryan, thanks for screening. On to item five, the consent agenda. Item five, approval of regular and special meeting minutes on February the 19th, 2019. Item B, approval of special event permit, application filed by the AR Mitchell Memorial. At 150 East Main Street, that's tomorrow, March 6th, is there a representative here?
Yeah.
Item C, approval of resolution River Walk and Pregatory River Restoration, that also includes the Boulevard Edition, from what I read. And it's the enhancement of Great Outdoors Colorado Studentship Impact Grant, in collaboration with Pregatory Watership Partnership. And just a little basic information on that is to apply for a $250,000, $250,330 grant.
It's, now it's like $286.
Now it's like $286, it's gone.
And it includes Fisher's Peak.
Well, that's great. Item D, new retail facility application filed by Herbal Garden South LLC at 3620 Freedom Road. Setting a hearing at 6:00 PM on April 16th, 2019, we have a representative that, okay, read Sam. Item E, approval of the bills. Item F, approval of payroll, February 23rd, 2019 through March the 8th, 2019. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, first and second, may I call vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Gennon?
Yes.
Greeno?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings. Item six A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance correcting an inadvertent omission of a portion of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code. Hearing is now open. Anyone from staff, any information that you want to give us on that?
Mayor of City Council, the ordinance basically spelled out, there was an omission in the ordinance that was adopted to, adopt the 2018 International Energy Code, and what it did is, by just leaving out one number in the sections, it omitted an entire group of sections. So this just would correct that.
Thanks. Any questions?
Unless someone else does.
Any question, go ahead.
Was it just an accident, or was it purposely omitted to alleviate something else, and then we realized we needed it?
No, it was, it was an inadvertent omission.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience to speak for consideration of ordinance, or against? Not, hearing is closed. Item six eighty-one, the second reading of an ordinance correcting an inadvertent omission of a portion of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code. Have a motion, please. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Gennon?
Yes.
Greeno?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight, consideration of bid results for the purchase of pickups. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mike, you have some information for us?
Not much more than what's in your packet. Good evening, Mayor of City Council. I went out to bid for a budgeted pickup for the water department, a smaller truck, mid-sized truck, and received four bids, and they're in your packet. One for Tacoma, and two for Ford Rangers, and one for Chevy Colorado. So, it was a pretty good bid, and Scradley Bar Ford was the low bid for $25,405. When I brought this back to the department head meeting, other departments said, well, wait a minute. You know, we have planned on bidding out trucks, and we have the fleet budget, so I'm before you to approve not just one, but six. And there's a list of what, what we're replacing, or moving around. 2008 Ford Ranger with a hundred thousand miles of water treatment, 2003 Ford F-250 with 200, 202,000 miles, 2001 Dodge Ram that's only got 93,000 miles, but it's constantly in the shop with with issues with transmission and just the power steering, it's just, it's a bad truck, a lemon, I think, but anyway, that's. 2003 Ford F-250 with 167,000 miles. A 1994 Chevy S-10, I don't know how many miles, because the odometer is quiet. Right, and then, then we've, I think, we brought it to you a couple of meetings ago, where we hired a safety coordinator, and that position is going to need to travel about to all our job sites and ensure safety, and, so, I think that's the six.
Any questions for Mr. Valentine, Anthony? What are, what are the plans for the trucks we're replacing? We're not going to stack them around town, I know.
No, no, we're, they're, all the older ones are going on the auction. We are moving one truck that is a bigger truck from Street and Bridge to, because they need a bigger truck, then one be smaller, so that's what, we're moving one around. The others are going to the auction block, or scrap.
Fleet management is a nightmare, and keeping them safe and in running condition is a huge challenge, correct? But it, we have our people driving these trucks in that condition, that recreates a liability for their safety and the vehicle's own car, and for the city. We need to take a look at this.
I just have a very small question. The Rangers, are they equipped as well as, like the Scradley Bar Ranger was equipped as well as a good motor? Ranger, and then the Ford Ranger, the Rangers are not actually the same type of vehicles, the Toyota. I mean, the Toyota's a little bit better quality. Did you complete it?
Well, no, we, I put out the specs, and they met our specs. Ford Ranger actually stopped making those vehicles for about five years, and this is recently brought back, and it meets all our specs as required, so, yeah.
Any questions, Rusty? Benado?
Yeah, I just have, you know, I'm going through this, are these vehicles, are they gas, diesel, what are they?
They're gas, they're little pickups.
These are Ford Rangers, are small vehicles.
Correct.
Because, I was just asking, because with the diesel and stuff like that, it's so, so highly maintained, because the filters and everything are so expensive, and diesels, and they are trucks, but so we're looking at six Ford Rangers?
Correct.
And these, and these six Ford Rangers will have duty to, in each department, or what they're going to do? They're going to go to Street Bridge, they're going to go to...
Correct, so, one in each one of those listed, right. So one to the water treatment plant, one to the police department, that truck is the code enforcement officer that we received that truck from Pioneer after it was used up, and it's got 200,000 miles. One to engineering, that's, we're using that big Dodge Ram that was passed down, I believe, from the water department to the gas department to the engineering department.
What happens with the S-10 that goes to signs, the street signs? Is that still in running condition?
I don't know where that's at, I think he took that out of service, a lot of that.
Really?
Yeah. And the S-10 for the sports and rec department, that's a 1994.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Yeah, do any of these vehicles require add-on equipment, after you get them to be, radios, that kind of stuff?
The only one would be the police vehicle, and I don't know if Charlie will do that, that's the code enforcement officer.
For the questions? Thank you. Thank you. Call vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Gennon?
Yes.
Greeno?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight B, consideration of bid results for project 09 dash, or 09 dash 2016 STE M296 dash 013, code SA2720573, Old Sopris Trail Section 1, the Boulevard Edition. That was for Pregatory Valley Construction, and we announced it's $459,000, $541.80. We had three bids, they were the low bidder, and these are CDOC grant funds and CIP funds. And just wanted to read kind of the summary on that for information. Says this project consists of constructing trail system through the existing Boulevard Edition in the city of Trinidad. Construction includes a trailhead with vaulted restroom facility, an asphalt parking lot, a mile-long ADA compliant trail system ten foot wide with compacted crusher fines, and meandering secondary trail system four foot wide, both including several destination points along the trail. That's what that is for, so could I have a motion, please?
I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Mateh, well?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tom Beach, Public Works Director, you covered Mr. Mayor and everything that I was going to say, so if you have any questions, I will try to answer them, this is, I'm not, I'm on the fringe of this project, I'm involved in this project, but I'm not really in the thick of it, so I'll try to answer your questions the best I can.
Mr. Benado, start the tour, if you have any questions.
No, sir, I don't.
This goes from where to where?
Currently, it'd be from the pedestrian bridge, the north side of the river, out about to the end of Boulevard Street, where you go across the tracks at the far end, and then to the, from the railroad tracks to the river.
I'm always curious when I see a wide swing in the bids, and two of them are pretty...
I'm always curious when I see a wide swing in the bids and two of them are pretty close, um, but then there's one for eight thirty-five.
Most of that, I mean, we, my worksheet, if I may, with the yellow lines, the highlighted lines are the ones that were the, uh, really outside ones. And just in two lines, um, the Doubletree was two hundred thousand dollars more right off the bat, just for mobilization and the segment was for the walkway materials that they were using, having to bring it in from that side.
But you have full confidence in the law?
We do, actually, yeah.
Okay. Um, I was hoping to see at least one or two emergency telephones in the Boulevard be implemented in case like a college campus security phone for an emergency that would go directly to the police department and for some reason that was never put into this and I asked about it a few times.
I was worried about that.
Well, I, I guess, I, is that something we can still add because I think if we're gonna have, you know, ADA compliance and bathrooms and stuff, I think safety would be something of concern if someone's out there later at night, we should have.
It's quite possible. I mean, we, it would be outside of this scope of this project.
So for like an add-on?
Sure.
Because, uh, I know people are out walking and they feel unsafe and if they are confronted by someone out there, at least they have some recourse if for some reason they dropped a cell phone or something. And I think that's imperative that we have a safety procedure in there as well as a backup. And it's just a blue light phone that goes directly to the police department for emergencies only.
Yeah.
Would you all be, be able to adding that for the safety of our people?
I think that would be an add-on feature afterward.
It would be, yeah, this up, we've, we've done almost five years trying to get this project.
I understand, I just think it's, it's a small little detail, but it's an important one nonetheless.
Bring that up, maybe talk to your son and, for consideration.
Thank you.
I have one question.
And then the questions, you guys? Okay, thank you, guys. Good luck. We're, we're starting. Call a vote please.
Bernado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Gringo?
Yes.
Pogas?
Yes.
McTain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Council reports.
With the exception of the heat, Johnson, it's, I have nothing.
Certainly, I have nothing.
No report on the foot?
No, it's still, that's.
Um, I was, uh, lucky enough to go to the masquerade ball put on by the Mitchell Museum this past weekend. I thought they put on a very classy event, um, they decorated very nicely. It was a great, uh, way to raise funds for the Mitchell Museum, so kudos to the individuals there at the Mitchell. Um, yeah, it was a great job. Um, on a secondary note, uh, TYC Pizza, the little revenue generating, uh, facility for the Trinidad Youth Club, has picked up two commercial contracts here in the community, so that'll help them out in raising funds to, for longevity for the club itself because we have a finite amount of time with, uh, private and public sector funding, so we're trying to continue on longevity financially. And, um, another thing that was brought to my attention, I know we're gonna be going through new developmental zoning and planning, um, I wanna make sure that we are still paying mind to those people who have been grandfathered in from other businesses through the residential neighborhoods who may now be having issues with selling their property due to potential conflicts. I just want this to be on our minds because it's been brought to my attention from a local real estate agent and, um, a person may be having a challenging time selling their property now, which has been used in a commercial application and now may not be able to. So I think we need to pay some mind to the people who haven't had properties and businesses for multiple years and if not decades and now are maybe having challenges being able to sell that property in a similar capacity. So I just wanna bring that forward and if you'd like, I'd be happy to send you that out now.
I think on something like that, we'll bring that up when we have our.
Right, well, it's been brought to my attention, I just want everyone to be aware that it's something of concern.
Councilmember Lopez, I can speak specifically without getting into the specific situation. I can say that, that when zoning was implemented in nineteen seventy-three, there were existing commercial uses and of course, none of us implemented that zoning.
Right.
But we're living with that zoning, so there were a number of, of, of commercial uses that are paying commercial taxes at the county as commercial properties that were actually legislatively zoned residential. Examples that you've seen were Hollywood Bar. It was a bar for many years. It was zoned residential. When Ms. Clark wanted to open the Hollywood Bark, the dog grooming studio, we waived the fees, we walked her through the rezoning and we zoned it Neighborhood Services. Chef Lou's is another one. It was zoned residential even though it was a restaurant for many years. Once again, waive the fees, walk them through the rezoning, it's a fairly easy application, but it does take about six weeks. So I think there's two, two things we could do. One, we really need to educate the real estate, um, um, groups in town. Some real estate agents who list properties understand there's a difference in how the county assesses taxes and what actually the city has as zoning. Those are two completely different things. Some real estate agents don't know that as well and it's really at the point that someone comes to you to buy a property where that real estate agent should be able to explain to you what that zoning is. However, we have situations just like the one you're talking about where someone gets all the way to closing and they come to get their business license and they find out in that moment, as we find out in that moment, that they're buying that property and it's actually wants to be used as commercial but it's zoned residential. So generally, we waive the fees and we walk them through the application. It takes about six weeks to actually get through the process, that's the way the code is set. There is in the code, an allowance for non-conforming uses and that's how things like Chef Lou and the Hollywood Bar and Duffy's Barber Shop and all of these businesses existed for so many years, operating a commercial business in residential zoning. The way the code now reads, when you cease to operate your business for a period of time, then when someone else comes into that building, zoning is required to be updated.
Isn't that after a one-year, uh, break?
I, I apologize, I didn't review the statute before I walked up, so I can't tell you exactly. It's a change of use. I can't tell you exactly what the timeframe is, but it's a change of use. When it ceases to exist as a barber shop and wants to become something different, it's a change of use. Um, we recently went through this when a gentleman bought the La Vida Yoga Studio and wanted to change it into kind of a, a, a consignment car dealership. Some of you may remember that. So those of you who have been on council or on planning and zoning have seen a number of these. It's the way we clean zoning up as we go, but for example, Redding Electric or Romero Liquor, you know, those are operating and existing businesses that are in non-conforming uses and we're not gonna go to them and say, you have to update your zoning, but the moment they close their business and someone steps in and we're gonna update that zoning to be appropriate. Okay? And so those are just examples. So we are addressing non-conforming, it will stay, but I do wanna assure you that if we know about it, we are addressing it right off the bat. I would say, and Mr. Sund and I talked about this instance with Ms. Clark, Georgie Clark, our, our planning department this afternoon, we may need to do a, a workshop for real estate agents so that they understand at the point of listing, that, that we could save a lot of pain at that point if they were more educated on it. Okay, thanks.
Any else?
That was it for me today?
Um, yes, I also went to the, uh, the Monte Garde Festival with the Mitchell and I thought it was great turnout and especially given what the weather forecast was. I think a lot of people left a little bit earlier because it was a lot worse than, than people anticipated. Saturday Trail was literally in whiteout. Um, and then some people had to go off to Agua and they said it was miserable. But anyway, it was a good turnout, everyone was dressed up and it was festive and I think it's, yeah, easily one of my favorite balls in, in the city. Um, also, oh, I got to see Lee, Carlos's fiance's engagement ring. I just got it that afternoon.
You did?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Okay, one other thing, I spent a fair amount of time, um, with Phil and Greg and Audra and Tara, uh, on conference halls and so forth, uh, you know, trying to get the space to create documents and shit. Uh, you probably have noticed that they're on the schedule for Thursday. Um, look them over, I know them pretty well, so if you have questions, give me a word or Flo or any of the staff. Um, they've come a long way and what I really wanna do is I wanna thank staff for just the fact of this job, Mr. Sund, Audra, Ms. Garrett, I should say, and Ms. Marshall. And, thank you. Thank you. That's it?
You have to go down.
Oh, boy, here we go.
Okay.
Probably not gonna be a popular opinion, but you know, here we go. So Trinidad is on a tipping point right now with so much going on and we need to ensure we have some safeguards in place to prepare ourselves from this part, point forward. With Ms. Marshall leaving, um, we have some big shoes to fill in a lot of projects she's been working on and we need to prepare for the future in case we have other people leave the city. Um, one of the things I'd like to see is a list of projects Ms. Marshall is working on and where they're at so that City Council can have something to go by and make sure that we don't have nothing fall to the wayside in this important time that we have going forward. I think it's important, I think we should work with Dole a little bit here on a job description to fill a position within the city. I think we need to look at somebody that has some outdoor recreation experience, some economic background and possibly some grant writing, um, in their background to come in here and fill that position as we refill it. I think it would cover a broader area and needs that we need and at some point to take, um, a safeguard for when possibly when Greg moves forward or retires, I think it's time for us to look at a more permanent type of assistant city manager position for in preparation of that. For as in the past, we've been set and in a rush to refill a city manager's position and I think having a dedicated assistant city manager would put us in a position where we would not have to be in a hurry if that happened to get. We, um, our boards and commissions, when the budget came around, uh, we made sure to ensure that we had money set aside for the boards and commissions and for training for them to operate. So yesterday, I believe it was at the boards and commissions, um, meeting, my wife handed in her resignation and as being married to someone that's on a board and a commission as you are, Mr. McTain, you know more about the boards and commissions than sometimes we actually want to and it's you tiptoe around to keep your nose out being a council person. So what we've had is, we've, we've provided them with money, but what we don't have is proper training so that they can do their job and it's important to do so. My wife listed her health issues, I think, just to kind of be kind, but her true resignation revolved around the fact of her frustration that as dealing with Ms. Marshall and one thing would be told what she's to do, to hear a different thing from Greg at times you've been at the meeting, Mr. Mayor, and another thing, she had Andrew for a while there. And now the final straw that broke the back is, we have a person that we hired to do plants in this town that ultimately come to her when an artist who's supposed to be here on a fifteen thousand dollar project next week for an install and Ms. Wolf has decided she don't want the part, the piece where it was dedicated to go before. We need to deal with our boards and commissions. We have funded them to do a job and we need to give them some groundwork and some guidance so that they know what they're doing, where stuff can go and so that they don't run into these situations anymore. These are people that volunteer their time for this city and come forward because they love this community and we need to assist them in doing their job better than what we're doing now. And so, let's see, lastly, consumption clubs. So the coffee shop in Denver is in business for a little over a year now and they are succeeding even though they have some financial struggles at first. I would like to see a work session in the near future for us to address this again to take a look at a possibility, I think that's revenue possibility through the tourism side that we are missing out on. Um, I think I stirred enough crap, that's enough for me.
Can I ask you a question? How are the buses doing?
So I haven't talked to them in a long time, I don't know what the buses are doing. You know, it's been through the winter months, I don't think they're doing much, but I'm sure they're gearing up for the spring, uh, takeoff. I know that they're all stacked up there behind the pawn shop and ready to go. It looks like, and I seen, uh, the limos out the other days. I don't know. That's all I have.
You know?
I don't have nothing, quite, can I?
Dave, uh, and just kind of response to some of the information that you have, uh, one of the things that I think that Ms. Marshall actually has sat and talked with, uh, Mr. Sund about what, how and what type of person that, uh, is needed to fill what she does currently. So I think that that's important that we listen to her. Uh, she had a good conversation, I think, with Mr. Sund on that, uh, a lot of recommendations. As far as, you know, a lot of the other stuff we talked about, we'll take that under some consideration and, uh, we'll see what happens with that. Uh, as far as, like I said, I attended the last tourism board, uh, and they will find out, I believe in June, if they will receive, I think state funds from what I understand. Uh, is that correct, I think, Ms. Marshall?
I'm sorry?
That, that the, uh, in June, the, uh...
Yes, uh, May is when we should know.
In May, the, if the, um, Welcome Center will receive.
Whether the Welcome Center will receive funding, we should know in May.
Yeah, and I think that's...
The long bill's presented in the end of March, so...
And I think they're looking at possibly, what, sixty-five?
We've made a request to have full funding, I don't know what that'll look like. It depends on what the governor's office, it depends on what the legislature gives them in total.
Okay. Uh, Wally Wallace, um, I'm not sure if, I think we've met him. I'm not sure if anyone else has met him, but, uh, he's gonna be doing that upcoming comedy festival in May. That's gonna be interesting. Uh, evidently, he's got quite a few comedians coming to town and, uh, hopefully that would be a nice little gathering.
We have a lot of comedians in town.
And, uh, of course, the big one that everyone knows about is that we closed last Thursday on official speak, Bill, and tomorrow evening, we have, uh, a gathering at the Mitchell Museum for the audience, if anybody wants to attend, we're welcome to come in, uh, see what's going on. We have a lot of people coming out of Denver and, uh, people that have been involved with acquiring the properties, that's, it's good to see. Uh, like I said, we helped, I wanna thank you for the Space to Create Project. I think you really did a lot of the work digging through all of the documents and, uh, of course, Audra was the person that, you know, there's a typo there and a typo there and, but Greg also did a tremendous amount of work, so thank you for all the work that you guys, I think we're on the path now to, hopefully during Thursday, we'll be able to finalize that and get to work on the project, so that's really, really important.
Might need to say something, no, I just wanna say to Tara, who's actually one of your true inventors, Art, but I also like to say, you know, uh, Councilmember Michelle appears, I mean, she works very hard for the city, for this council and she's got so much intelligence that I, I just, I lose her, I fool you, but, you know, I just, it's just a point of looking in another nine months or whatever when she's term limited and I'm term limited, I, you know, it just, I hope that, that the community comes together and really finds some big persons running for council and especially Michelle, you know, you've been talented just so, I appreciate it.
And many years of service on your part.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
Uh, also on the Amtrak issue, it was in the newspaper a couple of days ago that they were gonna release the three million dollars finally that, uh, they've been promising. Uh, and I think along with that three million dollars, there'll be some release of other funds that have been scheduled to be released, but it was kind of pending on whether they would release the three million dollars because it all kind of multiplies once that's, money's been released, so that was a big one there, so. Uh, the other thing that we need to take into consideration down the road, if, uh, we begin to start having any bike races or bike tourism through town, uh, we need to start looking at how to, uh, do we identify bike lanes in town. Uh, that's gonna be a real difficult issue, but I think it's something that maybe we need to maybe start considering what to do, how to do it.
Wasn't it addressed in the twenty seventeen comprehensive plan for wider roads like Nevada, Arizona? Um, I remember those ones specifically jumping out to my memory, but they, they were discussed, but we can just rub it in there.
Yeah.
Or paddle with it, I should say.
Actually, some of those roads are wide enough to make them into six lane lanes.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, right.
And Anthony, I've got a question for you. You know, when the, the fire department was here again, the debate, in the cog building downstairs, way stuck back in that corner, I'm not sure if that's an old fire truck that's back there? Could you talk to Todd and see who owns it? Name it. It's a fire truck.
It's a fire truck.
Be cool to fix it up so they can use it for parades or whatever.
Well, they know it's there. They very well know it's there.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody knew, if you know it was down there.
I, first I hear it.
It, it's stuck back, oh, he can hardly see it, I'd be a flashlight to see back there. It's a cool old truck.
Yeah.
Go down there and take a look at it. Yeah.
Like a truck truck or not, like a wagon?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a fire truck.
Okay.
It's a fire truck.
I didn't know how old it was, like...
I don't know how old that thing is.
Probably forty's maybe.
Right, that's what I was wondering, is it, is it eighteen eighty-one, I think, is that what it's at?
I, I would guess nineteen forty's.
Okay.
That was all I have. Greg, what's your?
Um, we're continuing to work on the La Puerta Development Agreement. We aren't there yet, hopefully we'll get there sometime in the very near future. We need that before we can sign the Dola grant to start the infrastructure in there. We're also working very diligently to try to give an easement for the sewer transmission line. Right now, our only right for that goes to the edge of La Puerta, and it can't get the Lynda. Apparently that, that, where the sewer main is right now, initially, a few weeks ago, I thought, well, let's just put another one right next to the old one. Apparently, we don't have an easement for the existing one, it's been there for so long. So, and, and railroad is not used to granting easements that parallel along their line, only ones that cross it. So this is kind of a new deal for them. Um, but, uh, hopefully, Cell Pace has been helping us with it a little bit, and maybe we'll make some connections that will get that easement granted. So it'd be nice to get that project underway. Um, the Goco Board is in town. They got here tonight, they're getting here tonight, they're meeting tomorrow, and, uh, they were going to take a tour of the crazy French Ranch, but the snow kind of made that impossible. So even if, even if it got warmer, it might've melted, ain't to think what mud would be like. So they're, they're not gonna take a tour, maybe just drive by it in a trolley, I'm not sure at this point. But, uh, it's nice to have them down here, and they provided a seven and a half million dollar grant for that property, so that's pretty significant.
They didn't wanna take the airplane?
I'm not sure who came down on the airplane. Uh, somebody...
Their tour and the airplane?
Oh, uh, I think some of them are doing it.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Greg, do you wanna bring up the meeting that we attended this afternoon?
Oh, uh, we attended a three-hour meeting this afternoon to be trained on, um, emergency management for executives and elected officials. It's a standard FEMA course, it's FEMA course E four oh two or G four oh two or something like that.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, you should've heard.
I know.
It was a three-hour lecture.
I bet it was.
But it, it covered a lot of the basics of, uh, incident command, how to operate EOCs, those kind of things, how to declare disaster. In order to have a disaster in Los Angeles County, we have to hit a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars in order to declare a disaster. Because the rule is that you can only declare a, in a disaster when your, um, means have been exhausted. And that's, but they, they just determine a dollar amount now to make it easier to communicate rather than checking with each individual government.
So if our plumbing line goes down, we could consider that a disaster?
If, if what?
Our plumbing line goes down, we could consider that a disaster?
Our serving, we probably could.
Or our water supply from up the river.
That might be one way to get the easement.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll put it right on top of the trash.
Exactly.
Um, but it, uh, and then for the state, I think it's seven point two million to get to a state designation. And they, they walk through different types of emergencies, different types of disasters, different levels of disasters. Um, the highest one being a level one, and when we get to that, it sounds like more often than not, they bring in teams from out of state to operate the disaster. So, uh, hopefully, we don't have to ever encounter one of those, but just to be prepared for it, that's a good course to take. If ever they offer another one, I encourage the rest of me to take that.
Uh, who attended today, of course, was Greg, myself, Audra, Donna, Marty, um, who else was there from the city? Is that it? That was it?
Oh, Tim.
Oh, Tim was there.
Yeah, Tim, Tim Howard was there, yeah. It was good. Um, before I wanted to ask, uh, could you give me a list of all the recommendations or suggestions that you had emailed?
I will.
I'd like to have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I wanted to mention the, uh, the Chedwith Awards, and, and the Chamber of Commerce, I have the Chedwith Award since, um, the last meeting, and I know that you all read about it in the paper. Of course, Bob Holder, Colonel Lou Simpelman were the co-winners. Um, Bob Utaro, Heather Baca were the, the runners-up. One of the reasons I wanted to mention that, I know Councilman Garego was there and the mayor was there. And of course, I have to mention it, 'cause it's one of the only social events I've gone to in a long time. But I wanted to say that the, the philanthropy award, I think it was the philanthropy award, was won by Ferrigosi Farms. And so I don't know what all they did, not, you know, wanting to necessarily give a shout-out to Ferrigosi Farms, but I think it's neat that one of the marijuana, uh, facilities won the philanthropy, or the philanthropist or philanthropic organization of the year award at the Chedwith.
I think it revolves around the fact that a certain amount of their profits go straight to, uh, benefit nonprofits, yeah.
I think that's absolutely correct. But it's, it's nice that they do that, and it was nice that they, um, they won that award. I wanted to tell you that, um, there's going to be an Ask a Lawyer Day upcoming. I know you all was asking about those things. Councilman Lopez offered himself in your recent, your recent proposal, but it's an Ask a Lawyer Day, and, uh, and, and that's April sixteenth at, at two o'clock.
Are you still listening to that?
Um, and then I wanted to say, do I understand correctly, the courthouse was shut down today?
No.
Oh, okay. And the reason for that is? Okay.
We have a water... Well, and, and we have come to a consensus, a solution, it's, they're not closing now? That I know? Okay. The last word is? Maybe it's, I'm sorry, let me take this back, 'cause I don't wanna speak for the county, but we talked about the court, the third floor, they cannot shut, shut down because they have...
They may have other things scheduled that...
Yeah, so they are not shutting down.
That could well be...
Well, I had, I had a hearing tomorrow, it's been rescheduled, the reason given is for the mechanical difficulties.
But I don't want to... They can't always leave if the state has to.
Right. So, and, and it has to do with our Water Name Project. We gave notice, um, we're gonna get notice Monday, and that's so soon. They gave notice today, they're shutting down and making a tie-in to the new vein on Chestnut Street. We may have to shut off two blocks of water to get that tied in.
Okay, thank you.
See you then.
Um, I wanted to mention also, we're going to be coming forward with a new model traffic code. Uh, Judge Nelson is wanting to have a new model traffic code. We have a, an older existing model traffic code adopted, so we're gonna be asking the council to adopt a newer version of that, and I will be presenting that to you in the near future. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, we're sure gonna miss Tara. And, uh, is this your last council meeting?
No, one, one more.
Okay. But anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Uh, I think down the road, we'll have to have a resolution, uh, 'cause I think I had a request today for softer seats for the... Think they're tired of sitting. Okay, that means head on to item ten, or excuse me, not item ten, item eleven adjournment, motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Call Lopez.
Bernado?
Yes.
Gero?
Yes.
Grango? Yes. Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Grango?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Thank you.